Okay, it is Thursday, September 3rd, 2020. We're calling in to order, please stand with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and just for all.
Okay. Do we have something from EMS for you?
I have it.
Okay.
I don't have that, did you do either?
You want to do that first? Put it out of the way?
You want to.
Which one is that? The ZOL?
Tell them what it says.
It's a ZOL. It's a provider agreement.
Bring the transfer.
I gave it to your office last time.
I have it.
My office?
Yeah. This was all at the cabinet.
It's the ZOL. You know, that ZOL software he's getting? It's the provider, service provider agreement.
Okay. Cost to...
The cost is already done through.
Just a signature?
Yeah, just signing the agreement.
Yeah. Yeah, talking about that. Yeah.
And then we sign the ZOL there. Provider agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll go to care.
There, Julie just hopped on. Julie, are you here?
Yes, ma'am, here I am. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
You are up, we're ready for you.
Awesome. Hope everybody is ready for another great day. And we've got some really good news to share with you all regarding the application process. Just wanted to kind of take a moment, though, to step back and think about where we were a month ago. And being able to think about the decisions that you all have made related to Cole County and the application. And I know Debbie and just the whole team with Kristen and the commissioners. So I wanted to thank you for your efforts. And we are on track with the application. Debbie, I don't know if you're able to show that online.
I can bring it up and maybe should I just... I can off and...
Just so you can kind of see. So we'll be ready to go live with that on Tuesday. We have a document that you may have in front of you that's really kind of a welcome document. Also, you could use it as a press release. And then that's going to lead into some of the discussion that we'll talk about today in terms of how we want to allocate those funds going forward. Also, just to touch on the fact that the application, it is a Salesforce application.
You guys just got to make a few click.
Secure. We're able to capture all of the data on the backend. That Debbie and Kristen won't have to spend as much time managing those applications. BKD will be able to take those directly from the portal, make those recommendations. And then, excuse me. Also, it'll capture all of the data that we need for reporting. So it's really going to streamline things. And again, just want to thank everybody for your efforts. And just let me know when that's up. We won't go through, obviously, the whole application. But if you'll look on the application notice, we have a link there that you could go to it today if you wanted to. But we'll make it available or we'll do the press release and let people know that on Tuesday we'll be ready to go.
And again, I sent you guys an email that has the link on it. You can go in there and see what we're talking about with the online application. And the Welcome to Cole County Cares Phase Two. This is kind of the press release she's talking about putting out. So we can get that on the website then. And when Julie tells me we're ready and we're ready to put it out there, then we'll go with that. It will definitely make it easier for the patrons to go online and do the application, too.
And Julie, this won't be ready until Tuesday, correct?
I mean, technically, it's ready. We just planned on probably putting the press release out. We could put it out today, tomorrow. It's ready to go. But we were planning on Tuesday just because it'd give everybody time to make sure that you all were ready. And if we want to change the date, again, that's up to you all. We were just thinking that probably Tuesday would be a good date.
Is any of the decisions they make today going to affect that application?
The only thing... So let me just touch on, I mean, as long as no one has any questions on the specific applications, let's talk about that. Just if we change any of the categories, but it's an easy fix. Like, it's like a 15, 20-minute thing. So like literally, we have the developers. They understand we're having this meeting this morning. And so once those decisions are made, we can tweak it accordingly.
Okay.
It's a good question. So with that, then I'm going to go ahead and just shift into the agenda and some of the recommendations that the working group has put together. And so you should have that in front of you. If you see, we've talked about the online application in terms of Phase Two. So this was the $2 million that had originally been set aside for these types of items. So again, these are recommendations. This is obviously for the commission to review, for you all to determine if you want to add something, change something. But these are kind of just some jumping off points. So our recommendation of the allocation for the $2 million would be to take half a million and that would go towards hospitals, medical centers, and nursing homes. That could be for-profit or not-for-profit at this point. Then we also looked at cities at $1 million, and that was based on kind of the census population. So again, we would kind of think about the same type methodology that we did with the schools, that the ability for someone to apply would be no more than what their allotment would be would be based on the population. And that was based on the census. The third item would be nonprofits, which would be, and this would be non-hospital, medical, nursing homes. These would just be nonprofit organizations, $300,000. And then small businesses, $200,000. And our recommendation would be that we initially open this up only for businesses that have not received other COVID-related funding. Again, there's the contingency. We can always open it up more, if you like. Sometimes it's hard to go back. If you open it up and then come back and say, well, we're going to cap those dollars, that sometimes makes it hard. So with that, I'm going to just stop for a second. And then we can get into some of these other items, too. But just from an allocation standpoint, do you have any questions on that?
So is a PPP loan considered COVID-19 funding?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so COVID would be PPP. It could be FEMA. It could be... That's why we got getting into the details. It's different than the CRF funding, which is the coronavirus relief funding. So it will also, if schools... And this kind of excludes that. But if someone got funding through the Department of Education, all of those items would be considered COVID-19-related. And that would just be for small business. So if it's a city or nonprofit or hospital that receives those funding, that would not be applicable to them. Any other questions at this time? So then I'm going to go ahead and just move on to some of the other items that we suggest. Is the application related to loss of revenue or unemployment are not being accepted at this time. Other applicant types, such as small businesses, will be considered in future phases. So this would be, again, if you did not want to include small business, then we would say other applicant types, such as small businesses, will be considered in future phases. So that's the caveat there. Educational institutions can apply. Funding will not exceed their Phase One allocation. So what that means is that if some schools have not currently applied, they can still apply under that initial allocation, but they still can't get more than their original allocation. And we talked about the funds will only be distributed through reimbursement. So again, we'll continue the reimbursement model rather than advanced funding. We talked about, in the working group, that applicants who have received other COVID-related funding would receive a lower score, meaning that just factors into the scoring. So... And that's not really different than what we have currently. But we just wanted to reiterate that with the new application coming out and being opened to more organizations. Applicants can apply multiple times, but first-time applicants will receive a higher score. And then one of the items we also wanted to touch on is we continue to have more and more internal county needs and requests coming through, is that those county priorities should be vetted through the commission so that we're not presenting something to you all. It's possible something could comply with the funding, but it might not be a commission priority. And doesn't mean it's not important. It just means that the fact that they're limited funds, it might not be able to be funded. It might be able to be funded in the future, but at least at this point. And that way, the internal county departments can make sure that you all have kind of vetted that decision process.
So we were kind of thinking that maybe they would come to you prior to applying and just make sure you guys are on board with the application. Maybe sign up on the application before they submit it through BKD to make sure that what they're applying for is a priority for you all.
So why wouldn't you see if it qualifies before you even show it to us?
Well, we could do it the other way around, but the way we're currently handling it is it's coming to you as a recommendation. I mean, it could qualify, but it could be something that you guys don't want to do at this time or you want to wait and see what we have to spend as far as PPE and come back and...
So if we do that, then it cuts down your work. But if you do it to see if it qualifies first, it cuts down our work.
Well, if you keep it blind and you don't really know who's doing what or who's buying what, because you guys, when we ask you to approve, it's just that number. And yet you know it's internal, but you don't really get to know all the details about it. We were thinking that whoever, the internal departments can make the application, we bring the application to you guys first to make sure you really want to do it. The ones we've already done, we know that you guys have known about.
Most of those of you have already talked about.
You already had approved. One way or another, you were going to buy.
So it's just for our internal county?
Yes.
Yeah. That's what...
I mean, it's just kind of a heads up to make sure it's something you all want to do.
I don't care which way we do it, but if it doesn't qualify, then I don't even want to mess with it. But I see where you're coming from. If y'all don't want to mess with it, if we're not going to prove it anyway.
Right. And the question is, like, the working group doesn't really make that decision. And do you want that department here when you approve that one to present that to you? Or how do you want to handle that? Because right now, if it doesn't go to you at all, all I'm bringing you is I want you to approve this recommendation. And you guys may not have heard anything about it prior to. So we're kind of trying to do that upfront so we know it's something you all want to do. So when we present it, it can just move forward. Because I don't want each department to have to come sit up here when we're approving those recommendations. If you guys are fine with it in advance, they don't need to be here for that part of it. But if you guys haven't heard anything about it, then I have to tell all of them, well, come up here and wait and see if they have questions before they approve. I mean, I think streamlining the processes, they come to you beforehand. Yes, this is something we want to do. Then it goes to the application process. As long as it qualifies, it just keeps moving.
And I think most of the requests we've already had would qualify. Obviously, they've been qualifying, except for a couple, maybe.
And most of the ones we've done so far, you guys have talked about previously. So we've just kept moving through the process.
Yeah.
And like they said, there could be things that qualify, but maybe right now it's not a priority. So we want to push it down the road and do it later if we have funds that get moved around later. Or we know that we're not going to need a huge amount of PPE. So this is something we could...
I'm fine either way. If it doesn't qualify, I don't even want it in front of me, to tell you the truth. But if we're not going to approve it, then y'all don't even have to mess with it.
Right.
So I see both sides of it, so.
Well, one of the things, too, is we just want to be sure, especially... And we could even do, if it's a dollar limit of over $10,000 or whatever we wanted to do. But just to make sure, because you can argue if something necessary or a lot of that becomes judgment. And so that's where we feel like the commissioners will want to weigh in on that. But we're happy to do it either way. Like I said, if putting a dollar limit helps kind of manage what comes to you so that you're not having to deal with everything, that's fine, too.
Most of the things are over that amount, so let's put it that way.
We've basically been doing it the way you all just said to do it.
Right. We just want to make sure that you guys are on board.
It's work or keep doing it that way.
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
All right, Julie, that answer is that we will take it to the commission first before we put it through the application process.
Okay.
Do you guys see any changes you want to make to those funding priorities at the top? That's kind of the last piece we're waiting for, for that application.
And again, the cities, you know how you put a cap on the schools based on $100 per child or student in those schools. The cities was about the same. She based it on the population, and so we came up with a million total.
It's not $100, though.
No, it's not.
It's $20 a person for cities. I think $20.40.
Yes.
And the reason we got to that number was the 1.5 that we've allocated internally at the moment, we divided by the total county population to come up with a dollar amount per person. And then we applied that to the population of each city.
I think it's a good starting point, starting place. There's 1,000 different ways to do that, so.
And just remember, this is a living document, so it could change later. But this is just kind of those buckets we went up front. So we kind of know what we're shooting for and what amount we have to work with.
And it's reimbursable, so we will save the expenses. And they will have to be approved before they get paid.
So the not-for-profits, it's reimbursement?
Yes.
Okay. And hospitals, and it's all reimbursement? Okay.
How many nonprofits have you had apply already?
I think two.
Okay. I was just curious how that was going to go, because there's, I guess, churches that didn't get to have picnics can apply for money or...
Yeah.
You know, associations that didn't get to have their barbecue.
So right now, we're putting the caveat on there. If you guys are in agreement, that applications related to loss of revenue and unemployment aren't going to go through the process. So it would have to be more supplies or things that they had to put in place due to COVID. It wouldn't go towards a loss of revenue.
So if they had their picnic and they had to buy masks, just general?
Right. Right.
So on the cities list, too, these are all going to be reimbursable?
Those still have to go through the process with BKD. But yes, anything that gets approved would be a reimbursement.
Okay.
Are you guys...
I want to make one.
Are you guys okay with that? Loss revenue part and unemployment will not be something we will reimburse for?
I'm sorry.
Are you guys okay with that application process being loss revenue or unemployment that we're not going to accept at this time?
Yes.
Yep.
Julie, that's a done deal.
Where's the... If we decide to do additional testing, where's that going to go?
So right now, we kind of decided that that would fall in that internal bucket. We would want to contract or set those up internally. So that would fall in that internal community needs bucket. And we may have to move things around depending on what those applications look like. But we're thinking that testing is going to fall in the internal money.
So does anybody have any more questions for us?
So reimbursements, funds will be distributed through reimbursement. So if educational institutions still keep applying and they cannot be reimbursed, how does that fall?
Well, so right now, the educational institutions you've already approved have a set aside amount of money. So they're applying within their set aside amount of money. And for those private schools, we are purchasing. Everyone else is a reimbursement.
I think we would continue that into Phase Two.
Exactly.
Purchasing for them.
Julie, I do have one question. If we have an educational institution that applies that was not a K through 12, where would they fall at the moment?
So we do have... That's a good question. I guess it would depend on, are they a for-profit or a not-for-profit? I was thinking if it's a not-for-profit university, then that's where it would fall. If it's for-profit, then it would fall in the business category.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not for profit.
Do you guys have other questions for Julie?
And I can clarify... We can just say, I'll clarify that in the language on the application document.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So we're talking about scores, but I haven't seen anything that has a scoring sheet.
Initially, Julie, did you hear that? The scoring sheet? I know initially we had a scoring sheet. Has that changed at all with this?
No. We can certainly make that available. It's really just to let people know that, again, like in this case, first-time applicants will receive a higher score. But the scoring tool itself has not changed. So it's about number of people impacted. Have they received funding in the past? Are they a first-time applicant? Those are typically going to be the major items. But we can provide that.
Can you send that out again, Julie? That'd be great.
And how they're scoring based on those?
And how they're scoring based on those? And an example of one, Julie? So if you could do that in the scoring or one that you've already used.
Yeah, I'll also mention, one of the things that we're doing is, for example, some of the scoring is, what your organizational capacity is, meaning have you gone through an audit? Can you manage these funds? Have you... In some cases, there's organizations that either are not required to have an audit or maybe smaller that, again, they don't need to have one. In those cases, rather than giving them a lower score, basically those questions won't be counted in their score. So what that means is as we've looked through Phase One, for example, there could be a, I'm going to just say, a private school that may only score six out of 22. I think 22 at the time is the highest score. And it may look low, but it may just be that most of those questions didn't relate to them. So with the new application, we'll be able to actually capture more of a percentage score so that, again, based on what they're eligible to answer, it won't make their scores artificially look low. Does that make sense?
That'd be great to see the one that's behind the application, too.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll do that.
I got your link, but I can't seem to get past page one.
You have to answer questions.
You can play around with it now.
So can I send me all the pages?
So the one you have there, you can play with. So you can enter information if you want to?
I don't want to do that.
Can we have a paper copy?
Yeah, I'm happy to take time and go through if you want me to kind of walk you through that.
And I think, Julie, too, that guideline that, remember we were going to attach before that, just the questions that they have to answer? Maybe that would be sufficient at this point? That kind of lists the information they need to have in place before they start the application? Did we have that document? That may be...
Just give me a paper copy.
And a paper copy of the application. Why, it's fun to go through there and ask what you are.
If there was a lollipop at the end of it, I might do it.
Yours will get deleted before it goes live.
Might be entertaining.
Any other questions you guys have right now? Any changes you want to make to any of the things we discussed today? Like I said, that's the last piece we're really looking for, to update that application. And then hopefully, we're going to go live with it on Tuesday.
All right. So I'm going to just kind of walk through, kind of high level, the questions that we're going to be asking. So it will start with the Welcome page, just like we've talked about in the past, that will have the details that we have confirmed today. We're going to be asking for, obviously, the name, the entity type, which that would be. Are they a hospital, a nonprofit, those types of questions. They will be required to provide what's called a DUNES number, which that is a federal funding requirement. That's how the federal government will track these expenditures. And there's actually a little box that tells them if they have one, they're going to know it and they're going to be able to provide it. If they don't, it shows them how to go online and get one. It's just, again, this is a federal government requirement. We're going to ask for the address, obviously. We're going to ask for authorized representative contact information as well as a designated point of contact in case there's two different people that we need to deal with. Then we're going to get into the questions about, have you ever received other COVID-related funding? And we'll give them those examples, FEMA, SBA, HHS, those types of things. If they answer yes, we're going to ask how much. Describe exactly which type of loan or grant or any of those items they got. If they answer no, it's just going to go on to the next question. So then when we talk about financial reimbursements, it's going to ask them how many individuals they expect to be impacted by this reimbursement request. And then one of the required questions related to the federal guidance is they have to describe how and why this request is necessary for the public health emergency related to COVID-19. So that'll be where they describe why this is important. Then we go into the categories. And again, these are federal categories that we're required to track and report on. And so one of the first category is what we're calling government, which would cover administrative expenses. It also covers the, what are called, transferred to other governments. And so we're still getting guidance from the state and from the federal government. So for example, if you're just doing... and from the federal government. So for example, if you're just doing reimbursement, it's not exactly clear yet whether that's considered a transfer to another government or if it would only be a transfer in the case of if we were doing advanced funding. So don't want to get too far into the leads on some of this, but, um, we're asking all of those questions because we're going to have to report on those in the back, on the back end, um, when we report to the state. We also, for each of these categories, we're going to be asking these questions. Why are these expenditures necessary? Where is the place of performance? Meaning, um, you know, where are these going to be used? And that's the address. Um, it's also going to ask the period of performance, meaning when does it begin and when does it end? Because that's where you're showing proof that it covers, um, the March 1st through December 30th. And it is the 30th. It's kind of an odd, you know, odd date, but it's the 30th of December unless it gets extended. Um, they're also asking the question of, and when I say they, meaning that the government, um, has said, what percent of completion is it? So in some cases, it's just a matter of ordering it and it's in place. In other cases, it may take time to get something up and running. So again, if it was a testing station or something like that. Um, so all of those questions are going to be asked for each of the categories I'm going to run through. Um, I also wanted to mention, I should have mentioned at the beginning when we're asking for the address is if they put in a zip code that is outside of Cole County, there will be, um, a kind of a warning, not a warning, but it's basically a pop-up box. And it's also kind of a flag for us to make sure, um, that we're not funding anybody outside of Cole County. So that, that will be there. So as I mentioned, the first category would be kind of these administrative type things. Then the second category is considered health, which includes public health, testing and PPE. And these are, um, categories, again, based on the federal guidance. Again, we're asking all of those questions. They're going to put in a dollar amount for each of these items so that we can track, um, how this money's being spent. So it's going to be how much money is being spent on testing and contact tracing? How much is being spent on personal protective equipment, public health? If they're not utilizing these categories, it'll just say none and they, they don't have to go through and answer every single question. But for every dollar that they're asking for, they're going to have to, you know, go in and include those dollar amounts. The economic assistance is going to cover precautions related to prisons, jails, homeless population. Um, that's going to be, again, this is other than small business, but it's going to relate to items like, um, you know, anything to mitigate the public health, any kind of precautions. This is also where the category of budgeted personnel and services that are being diverted for substantially different use in mitigating or responding to the public emergency. So this would be, uh, payroll that's related. It, this is not public safety payroll. So this would be payroll that could be, let's say you had an administrative assistant and now that person is out helping with testing. Or, you know, it's somebody that's not normally a public safety person, then they are now being diverted. Those costs are covered through the CRF funding. So, um, the next category is compliance with distance learning and telework. So these are going to be items related to, especially for the schools, anything that facilitates distance learning or improves telework capabilities. So, um, it could be, you know, mid, um, anything related to facilities or infrastructure with internet connections. We've seen, uh, what you all seen where, um, it may be disinfecting laptops or iPads for schools, those types of things. Uh, the next category is response, which is, um, food programs, housing support. So this is where the payroll related to public safety comes in. And so this would be, um, you know, public safety employees. Well, obviously, um, that payroll is eligible, uh, for reimbursement. Healthcare, similar, um, employees. If we were providing that employment benefit, um, reimbursement, you know, that had not been reimbursed elsewhere, that's where this would fall, but we're not really doing that right now. So, um, that won't be in the allowable category. Um, the next category would be medical. So this is going to be medical facilities, hospitals and nursing homes. Uh, so again, it could be providing social distancing, um, retrofits, um, really anything related to those particular facilities. And then of course, there's always another category. So if somebody has something that they feel like doesn't fall into any of those other categories, then certainly they can, um, you know, write that down and apply for it. Doesn't, you know, be a group, but, you know, we'll certainly take a look at it. So those are the categories. Uh, then we get into those, what I was talking about, the organizational capacity questions. So did your organization experience a closure, uh, related to the local public health restrictions? Are your employees currently able to support operations in a remote work environment? Will your organization be able to provide matching dollars? Has your organization had experience in the three, last three years managing grant funds? Does your organization have an accounting system to segregate expenditures by funding source? Um, are your organization's procurement policies in alignment with the federal guidance? Have you had what's called a single audit? So a single audit is, um, related to federal funding. Um, has your organization had a financial audit? So those are all of those types of questions where I was talking about that they might not necessarily be applicable to every applicant. Then at that point, uh, we'll ask for any additional comments that they feel like they want to make that were not captured here. We give them a place for them to do a file upload, which will, um, allow them to submit all of their receipts. And then the last item is, um, their confirmation that just says, as an authorized official of the applicant organization, I certify the information here is true, complete and accurate to the best of my knowledge. And I am aware that any false, fictitious or fraudulent statements or claims may subject me to, um, criminal, civil or administrative penalties. So this is also protecting the county in that if somebody, you know, is being fraudulent in their application, you know, we won't always be able to catch every instance of fraud. And so, um, so that is here. And then they'll also be signing, as we've talked about, the subrecipient, um, agreements as well as, um, those attachments. One thing to touch on with, we've had literally, I mean, almost every day, the last few days, there's been new guidance coming out. So our legal team at B K D is actually reviewing that subrecipient agreement. So, um, right now, and we should have that out in the next few days, but they wanted to just make sure we're capturing everything. Um, so you'll see it will be, uh, probably slightly different subrecipient agreement, um, just to make sure we're capturing all the required data. And again, those are also protecting the county because there's a lot of certifications that the, um, applicants are making. Even once it's approved, they still have to sign all of those certifications. So I know that was kind of a lot and I probably went really fast, uh, but just want to, um, ask if there's any questions at this point.
And the application itself, it kind of gives the person a guidance as where you are in the application, how much you have left. And if you have all the information and you have it all in front of you, you could probably get done in 15 to 20 minutes with this. You know, so it's not like it's going to be that cumbersome for them to do this. And, and I just did it as we were talking. So I'm at the submit button here, ready to go, but, so.
Um, the only thing to remember is it's not a form that you can stop and save and go back. You have to have that information when you fill out the form and you can't stop and save in the middle. So that's why we kind of wanted to give them that additional instructions upfront so they know what the questions are so that they can have all the information that they need to answer them all before they start the application. So hopefully it doesn't take that long to actually fill in the application itself.
And by the email that they put on the application is where the correspondence will go back to if B K D needs more information or anything from them. And then at the end too, it will give their approval through there or denial through there. And, um, then Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, it will set them up a username and password once they pass this or approved for the.
Yeah. So, so the way this works is it's considered, um, when they first are applying, they don't have to go through any kind of a, um, there, any, we don't have to give them a login or anything like that. Um, and that's really because you don't know who's going to end up being approved or denied. At the point they're approved, we'll actually, um, send them a login because at that point we may want to either, um, we'll send them the subrecipient agreements. We'll be able to, um, as we continue to do monitoring that will be required to do. If we have additional questions, we want them to submit additional materials, all of that, that we can continue to correspond with them. So it'll basically be like an invitation, you know, your, your application has been approved. And, you know, here's your, you know, click on this link. This is your, um, invitation to log into the portal. You know, and at that point, you know, we'll be able, they'll be able to submit if there's any kind of reporting. Um, you know, it's possible that down the road, we'll need to provide, again, the guidance is not there yet, but most of the federal funding requires some type of outcome reporting. You know, so that's going to be more around outputs. It could be around demographics. It just depends. We don't know yet what that's going to look like. But again, as we need more information, this gives us a more robust system to, um, to manage that.
So I'm going back to like association, you were, I, and I like the idea that if the zip code doesn't match our zip codes, they have to come back, but like you've got, well, Alzheimer's, they're St. Louis, I think they have St. Louis and a Columbia office. Red Cross, uh, the Heart Association, you know, they're, they're here, but their offices are maybe in St. Louis. So, but you'll, you'll catch that and just ask them more questions?
Yeah, that's a really good question. The, the, the way the question reads is if they put in a zip code that's outside of Cole County, there will be a pop-up box that says, it looks like your zip code is outside of Cole County. Does this benefit the residents of Cole County? Then they can at that point say yes, and by getting description.
Yeah, I like that. I like that. Okay.
What else?
And again, you guys can play with this application all the way up till Julie says go live.
Um, so I guess my only question without any further changes other than the ones we've just talked about. Uh, do you want us to go ahead and, you know, get this out, um, in the next few days, you know, today, tomorrow? Or, you know, wait till after the holiday? What, do you have a preference on that?
I think we're just ready to go, run it.
I know we've got people already circumventing the phase two and they're filling out the phase one. So, yeah, if we can, if we can do it, at least they're going to be filling out the right application.
All right. Well, yeah, then we will, um, we'll get the date, we'll make the date today. And, uh, we will work to make a couple tweaks here and then, um, we'll get that out.
And Julie, you'll send me that new press release type thing so we can put that on the website?
Yeah, I want to, I want to update the language in that a little bit and then we'll, um, plan to get that out.
Yeah, and the link that we'll need so we can get that all before we take down the other one.
I was going to say, Julie, can we maybe make that tomorrow just to give our internal people time to get our website updated? Just a little bit of time for us to get that up and going and everything on the website correctly. So maybe go live tomorrow.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll make nine four the date.
Okay.
All right. Very good. Well, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. We'll be in contact.
All right. Bye-bye.
We'll get you all that information too. Chris, the application paper copy of it, the guidance paper and the scoring. Was, was there anything else? Anybody want to know?
Yeah, I'd just like to know how they're going to score based on their response. If it's a zero, it's a one, or it's a two, and then, um, so things I'd like to get back from them is application, uh, does it qualify? Yes or no? I mean, if you're going to bring everything to us, it's the first thing I want to know is does it qualify for CARES funding? And then the amount requested. And then if they have a score, the score needs to be based on what the total would be for that applicant. So if there's 22 possible, but they're not taking, they're kicking some of those out, then it should be 15 out of 22 or 15 out of 18 or, or what that is.
So that's where she was alluding to, going to like a percentage and that percentage being based on the number of questions they actually have to answer that are applicable to them.
Right. So, yeah, just something there. So.
And I think that would be easily done, like on the approval list.
Well, and I think that we're kind of doing amount and qualify at the moment. So it's, I don't think going to come out as to approve if it doesn't qualify at the moment. Everything that qualifies is going to come to you with a recommendation. And then we'll just add that scoring piece to that sheet that you're getting weekly.
And then, so like I asked the other day, is, is the group making a recommendation or is everything coming to us?
Everything's coming unless there's questions. So your application could take a little longer if there's questions coming out of the working group.
Right.
So as soon as those questions get answered, then everything's moving forward. We were holding off on the small businesses and the non-for-profits at the moment until we got this piece figured out. So we do have a few of those that have been applied for that we were waiting to get this piece of the puzzle done before we brought them forward.
And they, they made some recommendations too. I mean, the, the organization might be asking for $50,000 and they recommended $15,000.
So there's where you're seeing the allowable amount versus not allowable.
I, I thought that was kind of.
Right.
Yeah, that gives us some guidance.
So yes, every, everything that's made it through the working group with no questions is being moved forward. If there's additional questions, it gets moved to the next available meeting and then gets moved forward. So there's probably a handful that we have questions on at the moment that most likely will go next week because this is going to be active. Um, and then there's some that don't come in in enough time to review for the next week. So they get moved to the following week because the review portion hasn't been completed before it goes to the working group. So.
Yeah, if there's any other, like, any other guidance you can give us on this for them and for the working group to, you know, like, small businesses. Obviously you took out loss of revenue and unemployment. If there's a flat dollar amount per business you want to accept? Or if you want to just let that open to let the scoring take its place? You know, obviously we have a cap of point two, but if you want that to be so much per business, you know, that becomes a little bit, depending on what people ask, you know?
So with the schools, we've come up with that allocation. With the cities, we've kind of come up with that allocation. But for these other ones, we don't have a cap on what they can receive. Is that something that you want to put in place?
So what other ones are you talking about?
So like hospitals, non-for-profits, small business, do you want to limit the amount per application that they can? Not per application, but in total. So like, do you want to say you, the total amount a small business could receive is $10,000? So they could have multiple applications, but they can't go over the $10,000 mark? Do you want to put any restrictions like that on the funding at the moment? Do you want to put any restrictions like that on the funding at the moment?
I think that's what Callaway County did, but again, with, I don't, I'm not really sure how they're running their CARE.
So, let's just go down a rabbit hole here, but, anyway, so, if all small businesses have a deadline to apply for, and then we score them all, but you're saying a cap of how much would be available?
Well, so you may have a deadline, but right now, we're moving forward the applications as they come. So, the first, first rabbit down the hole asks for $100,000.
And they qualify.
And they qualify. Do you want to cap the dollar amount that you're giving to that business?
Well, so my preference would be that all of them have to apply, and all of them have to be scored before we look at any of them.
But they may not have had their...
Not first come, first served.
But if they don't have the expense until December 1st, then...
Right.
That's where it's going to run into a problem.
Right.
Well, we had some big companies apply, and we had some small companies apply already, and I think what they're saying, I think, well, one of them wasn't qualified anyway, but it was $99,000, and then we...
I wouldn't mind waiting until the very end and say who all's applying, and then we'd make a decision there, if they want to apply for $100,000, then we'll ask for it.
I mean, the other option is to put that cap on it upfront, and then if we have funds left or we reallocate, they can reapply.
And like, like Julie said, if you leave it wide open right now, then it's kind of hard to go backwards.
So if you want to limit that, you need to do it now, not later, because you can remove those restrictions, but you can't add them after the fact.
Because you're right, they're, they're just going to keep coming in the whole time, depending on how this, how the virus affects us here in Cole County. You know, if it gets worse, then obviously businesses are going to have more of expense come later in the year. And to wait till it's over, gosh, when it's over, or December, December 31st.
Well, and we don't want to push all those disbursements until December, it's going to...
And we want to help the businesses now, you know, that have the legitimate reimbursables.
And some of them had the expense back in March, so they've waited until now, we hate to tell them they have to wait till December.
I mean, almost every business could make that argument, so, you're going to pick winners and losers, and so, you know, I mean...
You could pick real big winners, real big losers, if you don't put a limit on it, is what I'm...
I mean, so, I mean, either we, we rank them all, add a deadline, or we don't fund them at all.
Only on the small business portion, or are you talking every category?
Nonprofits, or...
Well, I mean, I think you got to do it all, I mean, just like every other grant application that would happen, that you do with the Regional Planning Commission, or, you know, CDBG, or whatever, there's a deadline, and, and you rank them, and, and then you, you fund them based on that, I mean, yeah, is there going to be, are you going to have to make some decisions at some point? Yeah, but...
My only fear with that is, we have some non-for-profits that have already applied that are telling us there is critical, we need these things, we need to, we need to do these things to serve the public, and are you going to tell them, "No, we're not going to do it at the moment, because we want to rank everyone else as well"?
So we can do sub-phases of each phase, essentially, and if it's critical, and they score 22 out of 22, that's a condition, you have to score 22 out of 22 to get this money. If you have 10 of them, you can just divide the amount of money they're going to give out by 10, and maybe they don't get all their funding requested, but you can get something, because you're going to have a lot of them on the, I don't know, on a bunch of them that we do, you'll have a bunch of them, they're going to get 15 out of 22. And when you get to the end of the money, maybe that's where the cutoff is, and then you got to decide what, what you do with those 10. Do you ask them if they'll take partial funding and give them a little bit, which I'm sure they'll...
I think you'd have to, yeah.
I mean, so there, therein lies the issue, you know, we, we don't know what that critical level is, I mean, we haven't seen that application, we don't know what they're asking for, and what they're deeming as critical. I mean, if we had a lot more information, maybe we could make, make a decision based on that, but...
I just want to get Julie's insight on this, because this is a very, very important question. I mean, we do have the limits per category now for Phase Two.
If you put like, say, $10,000 for small business would be the max, you can, you can serve a lot more small businesses than if you have three that get...
Hey Julie, sorry, this is Debbie from...
$50,000, $60,000, and then you've got...
Hi.
Hi, hey, we got back to the point you were talking about.
She's only got $200,000, so, you give about 10 grand at a pop, I mean, that's 20 businesses.
For small business, you know, we have the .3 and the .2.
But if you end up giving out just three, or four.
You know, if we wanted the commission to make a decision per business, how much they would want to accept or not.
But that would be the max.
Okay, so you're thinking about like, how much is it with the schools and a...
The cities?
Or a cap?
Right, and they were tossing around different ideas. Our, our biggest fear, I think mine is, is this nonprofit, you know, we have .3, we're going to get one big application asking for all of it, and they're going to score very well, they're going to score 22 out of 22. Now, how does that play out? Or how have you done that in other entities that you guys have worked with?
Yeah, so, again, it, it really comes back to, that's where that judgment comes in with the commissioners. I mean, I have seen partial funding, I have seen outcome for serve, and then, you know, what you guys are doing in terms of a cap, I think, might make sense especially from a, especially at the beginning, because, you know, you could limit the dollar amount for applications initially, and, again, you can always be more lenient down the road, you know, that, that's, it's a lot easier to go that direction than to try to reel it back to, you know, what you committed at. So you could, I mean, I realize it's not a lot, a lot of dollar amount, but I don't know if you want to limit the applications to, you know, 5,000, 10,000, if it's, again, I don't know if it would be related to the number of constituents that surely are, I don't know, feet.
So Julie, one of the other, one of the other options was putting a deadline on this application, and holding and scoring everyone that applies, and basing it on that. So could we put a deadline on the Phase Two, and hold the nonprofits and small businesses, and score them all, and only move forward the highest score?
Yeah, so, I'm just thinking, like, if you, I mean, we could, would it just be for nonprofits that would be that way, versus...
Small businesses too, and I don't know what you do with the hospitals.
Yeah, I mean, we could shift it from, you know, it's kind of approving as we go, to saying they have a deadline, like, you put it out there tomorrow, and, you know, we give them a two-week deadline, and then just those applications in, you see that the calendar, it's like, we put on the 15th, something like that, and then, you know, all the funding would be a map and distributed or something, you know, by the 30th, or something like that, where you did, it'd be hard to give them just one week, I think, you know, by the time you get it out there, you probably have to give them two weeks. And then if you're trying to process everything, what's going to happen is people are going to, you know, they're going to weigh and submit everything on, out of pocket, you know, on the deadline, but then you'll have, which it doesn't mean you can't do it, it's absolutely a good, but it'll just take a little bit more on the processing side initially, because you're going to be, like, doing it all at once. But, I mean, we could, I'm just trying to think through, you know, if we were going to do that, we, it would probably make more sense to have the whole application process, just from a consistency standpoint, have the same deadline. Because I think it might get confusing on who, who's getting funded immediately, who's versus who's getting funded in, you know, two weeks from now. Does that make sense?
When were you looking at cutting off the application as far as, because of the deadline, at the end of the calendar year? Was that the November?
Yeah, so we were, we said that everything needs to be spent or reimbursed by the 30th of November, which then gives the county the month of December to kind of finalize this thing, and to make sure that, you know, you, you get all your funds spent, because it, it's just really hard if you start distributing, you know, within two weeks of the deadline, and you think that that's going to buff things up, so...
So it would really be very cumbersome if we waited to not pay out anything from now till the end of November.
Yeah.
It would probably be the second week of December before people would actually see money. So, in Phase Two, I, I like the budget amounts that we have, I mean, we could wing it and see what people send in, or, and then...
Or we can cap it for...
Pro-business.
My, my fear with holding them is the, the process of, like you said, everybody applies on the last day, then it's a push to get through BKD with all of those bulk, then to get through the working group in bulk, and then if there's questions coming out of either one of those, to work through those questions on that many at one time, I mean, it's pretty cumbersome at the moment when we're getting 30 or 40 applications in a week to get through them all and get them to you the following week. I can't imagine if we're in the hundreds and trying to do that.
And that's four months, that we're just sitting there, that we're not helping the citizens. Go ahead, Julie.
Well, the only thing I was going to say, the nice thing about having from top of a cap, is since we've already done that in Phase One, I mean, people that are paying attention, that's not going to be a foreign concept to them, right? They're going to go, "Okay, well, yeah, that's, that wasn't been done before." So, you know, it could certainly be something for the month of September, we said, we'll set a limit for, again, I'm, you know, maybe it's a limit of $10,000 for applicants, not meaning athletes, you know, not application, but meaning an organization can only apply for $10,000 on the end of September. And then, again, based on the number, the dollars that we have, you know, October can be Phase Three, and again, we can, you know, that's kind of my thought, is that that way you're, you're incrementally spending the funds without over, you know, paying it all out in September, and then you're like, "Oh, you know, now, now what are we going to do?" So, that, I, you know, I see that that would be a very manageable and sustainable approach.
Are you guys okay with that? In Phase Two, just going for the nonprofits and small business with the top, top budget there, but $10,000 per entity?
So they would, they would apply again?
Yes.
Because I mean, $10,000 isn't going to cover not-for-profits, so they'll, they will apply again for October?
Phase Three.
Phase Three.
Yeah, so you could open it up to be bigger if you don't spend the allocation, or we put more into it.
So in other words, in Phase Two, we're, we're trying to spread it out as wide as we can, I mean, you got to...
That qualifies.
Yeah, that qualifies, so...
And then we, then we reallocate at the end of September, and maybe the next round, you open it up to be more than 10.
Yeah, okay.
You guys good with that?
Is that doable?
So you're going to do this at 10,000 max cap, and if we have 20 businesses that qualify, and we give them the money, it's gone.
In Phase Two?
It's gone, when's Phase Two end?
Well, we could, we could say that Phase Two ends the end of September, and then if you want to reallocate a portion of the contingency or something...
End of November.
End of what?
End of November, like we were talking about, and I just do it then.
Well, so we're hoping to have all the applications approved by the end of November, so we can make sure that it's all spent by the end of December.
Not everybody's going to realize the expense, maybe, maybe when it is a fan, you got to close down, or Samuel's Tuxedos has to put a drive-through window in so that he can serve people without contact, and he doesn't do that till November, you don't have that expense.
Well, so we do have that additional amount that's in contingency, and we may have additional funds that we reallocate from other portions if we're not spending where we think we are. So if, if you have money left over in the internal process, and you want to reallocate that to small business, that would open up another round of funding for them. Or if you have, you know, nonprofits, and we, we think that the need there is way higher than what we expected, we could reallocate a portion to nonprofits itself. I mean, that's, eventually, we're going to have to spend down...
Just kind of play devil's advocate, once it, once it's gone, it's gone.
Right.
So if we're going to do this now, and then when it gets real ugly, or if it gets real ugly, then we're going to be sitting there going, "Crap, we should have held on to some of this, because we have other priorities."
So we do have 2.3 in internal that we're kind of holding on to, to decide that testing piece, and if there's other community things that need to happen, that can be reallocated. We have 1.8 in contingency that can also be reallocated, so we're kind of holding that back to do more phases and do more stuff, this is just the proposal at the moment for Phase Two was $2 million.
And we're not necessarily going to give $10,000 to each small business.
No.
You know, some might be applying for last, and then some, like I saw, some like I saw, even though they applied for more, BKD had, had kind of cut it...
Well, whether they qualify or not.
I'm not saying change that amount.
So...
I'm just saying, once we go through it, we're done with it, so if somebody has, you know, hadn't had to do anything yet, but in October, November needs to do it.
I just think we have to keep moving forward, because we do have that hard deadline of December, so we have to do, if you want to do it in phases, and we want to reallocate money to different things later, but at some point, we got to keep moving forward and spend the money down.
And I think the way the budget is...
The other thing you, the other thing you could do, for, you know, if you made, if you took the $2 million, and you basically got, what is it, September, October, November, so, you know, again, you take a third of that now for the month of September, and that sort of gets allocated to the September phase, then, again, you have an, you know, you have October phase, and you have a November phase, and you could, and then that way, there's money evenly for these next three months, again, you could, you know, maybe, maybe you say that somebody can only apply, again, you could put a cap on it, you could say somebody can only apply next to the month of September, or, you know, they can apply three times, or, but if, if you want to be sure you have, you know, money as you go forward, then, and again, October, because if you feel like you have a lot of pent-up demand, then I would say you probably want to, you know, at least spend a million of that $2 million now, if you feel like you're going to have more demand as it gets into the fall, and I know nobody really knows, but you should then, you know, methodically spend it, because then you could start adding some of your contingency to each month, you know, if you think you got $1,008, and you really have four months to spend it, you could start releasing some of that in October and November, just as you said, Kristen, to help clog that, some of the, the dollars in the application phase.
Yeah, we just don't know what November, December's going to be like.
But how long does it take BKD to go through the application to determine if it qualifies or not?
It just depends on what the application is, and how many questions they have as to how allowable it is or not, so some of them...
Obviously, there's some that are black and white, but the gray ones, so...
Right, there's another, yes.
Who determines when it's black or white if it's in the gray area?
They do.
Okay, so then...
I mean, I, yeah.
Now it just comes to us. Now it just comes to us.
If it's a completed application, you know, we're able to turn it around weekly through the commissioners. If we require more information, then that obviously that this is, you know, that's the way that.
And I think if there's if there's a request that's in the gray area, they're reaching out and trying to ask those questions to the state or somewhere and try to get that answer. So that we have some guidance that we're following what we should be. Because we have had one from the school that's kind of gray and we're trying to get an answer on, does this qualify or does this not? So, um, that's why that one's being held back. It's not moving forward in the process because we're trying to get those answers.
And even the applicant, to try to get ahold of them and get the information to them sometimes takes a while, so.
Well, it doesn't really take long to get it through if it's.
If it's black and white.
Yeah, if they meet it, so, I don't know, probably wait longer, but at the same time, I agree, let's move with it.
Well, so I think I think the million you have in this two million for the cities probably needs to move forward. We've already had requests from them over that amount. So that only really leaves a million that we're allocating right now besides the cities, and I think that's a decent number to allocate at the moment. It's just whether or not you guys wanna limit that or you wanna put a time deadline on it.
In phase two, yes.
And like we said.
We can limit it and we can always, I mean, because I know ten thousand to some of these not-for-profits is just a drop in the bucket.
Right.
But, you know, we're trying to take care of as many entities as we can take care of right now. So that would at least help them, you know.
You could have ten ten thousand on small business and twenty five thousand on nonprofit if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you could do it.
And see with the with the restrictions, you know, like, I I think most, a lot of businesses have a P P P loan already too. So that's gonna.
Limit the.
Limit limit who we're getting, um.
So do you guys wanna put a limit on small business? Let's just do small business first. Or do you think, like Sam said, that took care of it by putting in the stipulations that they couldn't have any other COVID funding?
I think that'll 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 keep a lot, you know, kick a lot of them out for right now. And that's not saying that, you know, come the end of November and we're sitting on some money, we can always reconsider.
Okay, so do you want a limit on small business or not? In phase two only?
That's a two-part question. If you do, how much?
Ten thousand is what.
So so first question, do you want one?
Yes.
Yes or no? And then we'll talk about what that number is. I think yes, but.
I do, too. I'm leaning towards yes, but I didn't want to answer the second question. Some arbitrary number, we're just gonna pick out of the air.
Well, when you're looking at point two million, you.
Right, you have to you have to look at it as if you go too small, you're gonna get a ton of applications for a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars. So you don't want to.
That's fine, I'm helping more people.
It is, it's just a lot of process and paperwork for a small amount of money. So do you wanna go to five thousand or ten thousand and give them something to shoot for? Because, I mean.
That thousand may mean more to somebody that isn't as big and they'll fill out the paperwork for a thousand bucks because it does mean more to them.
You can still do that.
We just wanna stop the applicants from getting all of it.
You just don't want that hundred thousand dollar application.
That's right.
So it's not gonna stop you from applying for a thousand. It's just gonna say you can't go over ten thousand at the moment, or you can't go over five thousand at the moment. It's not gonna stop you from applying for a thousand if that's what you need.
I do have one business now already over a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So that just puts in perspective to what we're talking about here, so.
Well, the other thing too, is we, I mean, we could go at five thousand. And if we if we see that we're just not getting enough applications or, you know, see somebody's applied and then they can't apply for anything more, but they still have the need. Excuse me, we can, again, then we can always increase that allocation amount. So. I mean, if it, I think the question is, do you wanna try to help?
As many.
As many people as possible quickly? Or be able to. Well, maybe you have to help as many businesses as possible or, you know, high enough to where everybody gets a chance at it, so.
So then you don't need a limit.
I would do five thousand because you're gonna help more small businesses. You know, the ones that have the hundred thousand dollars in already, I would bet you they've used some of these other.
avenues.
Yeah, to to get the money. So if you do five thousand, the the mom and pops and stuff like that, that's, that could make a difference as to whether they stay open or not. And you are helping more. And if we don't see that we get enough, you know, five thousand, you could, you can change it.
Right.
Anything can be changed, but, um, I kinda like five thousand.
Jeff, Kristen.
I'm just here to argue.
Sorry, Jeff, no, you have to.
Take a decision.
Are we still gonna take them first come, first served then?
I think at the moment, yes.
And if their scoring is still up there. In phase two.
I mean, I just don't think that's fair, and so I probably won't approve any of them, so. That's just where I'm at. Just because you're the first application in and you score well, you're gonna get funded, I just, I mean.
And I think the limit on each one then helps that.
I I don't disagree, um, but, I mean, I just, every other grant program out there has has a deadline and has a scoring mechanism. And you either get awarded or you don't. And so I just think that that's, you know, whether it's multiple end dates or whatever that is, but, um.
I kinda like having some kind of a set date, too. And if we do, you know, half of the two hundred thousand at the end of October. We take all of them at the end of October, go through them, and then if there's money left from that, we make some changes, open it up to either larger amounts or or whatever. And then go through.
Or even two rounds, you know, where you could.
Yeah. Can I have a small grant round and then we can do a big grant round?
I think you're gonna have to at least do one into September, just to move.
Okay, I'm fine with that, then do September and then we can do, figure out the end date on the the second round and see what happens after September thirtieth.
Julie, instead of putting a.
That does keep it moving, like you said.
So are you putting a limit on it still if it's end of September?
I mean, I'm fine with the limit, um, just as long as we have, you know, so, so you split it in half. And you got a hundred thousand that we're gonna award after the September thirtieth scoring or whatever. And then a hundred thousand after October thirtieth or something, have two rounds of scores and give out maximum of five thousand or whatever it is, so.
Julie, have you heard that?
Uh, I wanna make sure, you might have regenerated it.
Yeah, small business, that's point two million, like we have the first deadline being the end of September. We look at all of those, even maybe even put a limit on it per entity. And then if we didn't get that many, that we open it back up for another month.
Okay, so we would have, that business would be the end of September and.
But it would only be a hundred thousand.
I'm sorry?
But you would limit it to a hundred thousand in that September time range.
Phase two A for small business.
My only fear with that is if you have twenty businesses that apply and say they all score high. Are you gonna pick the winners and losers? I mean, if you have twenty of them that are all a twenty-two.
You have.
And you have a hundred thousand dollars, are you gonna pick the winners and losers and tell the rest they have to reapply in October?
Either that or tell them to get partial funding.
That's where it's gonna, that's where it's gonna come down to getting us, you know, maybe the application that came in, you know. I mean, it's it's not gonna be a blind application at that point. I mean, if you're picking winners and losers, you're gonna need all the information.
So then the second hundred thou, I'm trying to figure out, so who is that gonna go to, the bigger? I mean, are are we just gonna do another?
It could be the same.
We're probably overthinking it.
Are you guys gonna sit down and go through the review with us and review each one?
But what are y'all reviewing? Y'all are making the decision of winners and losers, y'all are just.
No, we're just saying if they qualify or don't qualify and rank them. Right, it's just if there's questions from B K D or if there's questions from the working group, like, you know. As far as purchasing or something with the application. I mean, we've had questions all over the place, but it's just talking through each application to make sure that there's no questions that are gonna come up later before they get approved. I mean, every week is a little different, we talk about different things with different applications because they're all different.
And if you guys wanna go from blind now to to knowing the person who's applying, that's fine, we can do that. Does it make the scoring harder for for you guys? I don't know. That's kind of why we were keeping it blind for a while because.
But right now, B K D is doing the scoring.
Yes.
So I'm fine with it staying blind right now. And then I'll decide if we're gonna, if you're gonna pick winners and losers, if we're gonna do it. And they can get partial funding if we have, you know, two hundred people come in and they want five thousand. That's one thing.
And I mean, I don't know, I mean, it could still be, you still leave the name off and you could go through the application and say, okay. I like this one. I mean, this one serves a more of a purpose than than this one. I mean, if they all score right there, I mean, at some point, you gotta have more information.
Depends if you wanna keep if you wanna keep it objective or subjective, I mean, we can, at that point, it becomes more subjective.
Yeah, because there's some parts of it.
This way with B K D doing it, you've got everything right there rankings.
I mean, you seen the application, it really doesn't tell you a whole lot about the business. It does tell you how many people they serve, it does tell you all those key things that they're scoring on to begin with. So to me, they're equal in scoring, it shouldn't matter what kind of business it is, shouldn't matter anything about that business. You're just gonna have to figure out a limit or a percentage that you're willing to pass out to all of them.
See, we could do the two hundred thousand now, and then if if we have more, there's a need for it in October or November, and we haven't had a spike or anything like that. We can do a second round of small business, because.
Right.
Small business, you're gonna get, I'm not gonna name names, Chicken Place out on Route C, uh, a place in Taos. Uh, you're, I mean, you're gonna get, you're gonna get businesses from all over the county that were not essential, that. That closed, you're gonna get, and we've got a lot of small businesses. So you could do the two hundred thousand if, and if we're. If 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 we come up with a vaccine.
I mean, I think you're gonna do a lot of applications that are similar, like I had to put extra iPad to do online ordering. Or I had to put in an extra window for drive-through, or I had to do this to make my business remote. I think a lot of the applications are going to be for the same thing, so.
Yeah.
Julie. Can you transfer to this one?
Can you transfer to this one?
I don't even, I don't know what this number is.
Nine one oh eight.
I don't think that works, but go ahead. Didn't the other day, we tried it.
So they're scoring based on, uh, these questions on this application?
It's happening behind the application, but it's based on number of people that you serve. Do you do an audit? Do you, you know, do you meet all the requirements to make you a good recipient? Does it qualify, is it necessary, is it in the timeframe? I mean, what?
Yeah.
We just kept talking, so here we are.
That applies to everybody almost. I mean, so how are you gonna, I mean, that's not really, I don't know. Just doesn't seem like there's enough information here to score on, so.
Well, maybe to help when we get that scoring thing for you. I mean, I had an old old one when we started.
Uh, let me, I can probably email that to you real quick, Debbie, if you'll be too.
Yeah, that'd be great. We were, hold on. I just think putting a limit on it per business in phase two makes sense at this point.
I mean, because the scoring probably hurts small business more than it does helps them.
Well, so that's why she was saying some of the things.
Because have you had an audit?
Not applicable, so they would be taken out of the list of questions and not scored on that particular question if they're not getting an outside audit annually. Or they don't get enough for a single audit, you know. What, the questions that are not applicable wouldn't be considered in their score.
How much y'all got so far? Does it look like we're gonna have over two hundred thousand?
Um, I would guess, yes.
So we're gonna blow through that, or we could blow through it right away.
Unless you put a cap on.
Are these critical things or are these, like I needed a new mouse because I didn't want people sharing all of the mice?
Yeah, it's kind of all over the place. I mean, some of them are asking for the moon in the sky and they're being told that these items don't qualify. But some of the things that they do have, yes, they do. So they're being particular about what they're submitting. So say you submitted a five thousand dollar request and we're telling you only twelve hundred dollars qualifies, um, so.
And some of it is this revenue replacement part and unemployment part will take care of some. We can't, we can't, I mean, we can't use it to supplant revenue replacement.
Right.
When we run out of money, we run out of money with it, so.
Yeah, that's why.
We do this and we, this is critical stuff and there is that much of it.
Well, and I think.
We can have it done by September thirtieth.
I think that it also allows you to say, if we go through two hundred thousand in a month, then we need to allocate more to that subcategory. And we, that's the need in the county and say, you know, hospitals aren't asking for as much. Okay, maybe we need to reallocate some of the funding we have for them to somewhere else. Or maybe they're the highest one and they're where we need to put more money. I think this round is going to tell us where some of those needs are and if we need to allocate more money to them in the future.
And I'm okay with that, as long as we have a a date set. And if it's September thirtieth.
I mean, I think that's actually a really good approach, Kristen. Uh, because it also, like you said, it helps, um, have a quantifiable need, if that's what they could.
Y'all good with September thirtieth?
Yeah.
I'm just, so is it a need or is it somebody looking for assistance? Because.
Well, it's reimbursable.
I get that.
So they've already done.
I get that, but I mean, so, you know. I mean, everybody's had expenses, COVID-related.
I think we have the same thing internally, is this, I mean, everything can qualify if you talk about it the right way. I mean, I can say, this will help me do this in the future and it's because of COVID that I need it.
Not everything, though.
Not everything, but.
So then I'm gonna ask for a new truck.
Right, but is that a priority, is that the need you wanna meet at the moment? I mean, is it, is it something to train you better for this in the future? Or is it, I had to buy all this P P E to deal with it as it was going on? Which one of those is a higher priority? I mean, same thing with businesses, is what's your priority of what you want to pay for and what you don't? I mean, putting in our windows here so we can serve the public, that was a high priority because it opened us up and let us continue business as normal. But is a training program or a software program to do things remotely a high priority? Because obviously you made it through before without it, but would it be nice to have it? but would it be nice to have it in the future? Yes. So I think that's subjective with any application. Internal or external, what are your priorities and what do you want to fund? And that's not what B K D is doing. They're telling you this complies. The working group's trying to ask some questions as to, you know, what exactly this is and everything like that. And then we're moving it to you. We're not telling you what those priorities are. We're not scoring those priorities because you haven't told us what they are. I mean.
But, and, and before, when we had limits on the schools, you gave us guidance on the schools, you gave us guidance on, on just the one thing for the city for reimbursable up to that amount. But that's what this meeting is all about today, is to get more guidance on what you guys feel is your priority, what's important, if you want to put a limit on these categories and then even digging deeper into it to stop the one business from trying to get it all. Do we want to put limits on each application? So other than you guys getting into each application and approving it, then we don't really need, you know, somebody to help us here.
We do.
Yes, we do, sorry.
Well, my initial for small businesses is.
They've done a lot.
You know, small businesses are the, are the single store, you know, mom and pop, and I think 5,000 would help them. These ones, like you said, that are 100,000 and more, yeah, maybe they qualify, but we could, we could do them maybe in October. I, you know, I think 5,000 for a lot of small businesses could really, really help them. For me, not, not nonprofits, I'd do 25,000 because I don't think 10,000 will do anything. But, but that's just me. But I'm, I'm like, okay, you know, we need to help as many as we can now. And so for some small businesses, $5,000 can really help them. If we, if we say, okay, we're not going to put a limit and we got $200,000, you could have two businesses come and take it all. And that doesn't help. So, you know.
Most of the small businesses or big businesses that I can think of all got some money.
Yeah, yeah.
And maybe we haven't limited to where we're not going to get a lot of them first round.
That almost eliminates all of them. And so, and the small businesses that, that I can think of, they either bought some masks and maybe they're wearing them now or they're not. They put up a face shield or something on their register, but they didn't spend, they didn't spend hardly any money.
No, so it, it's not necessarily that they would even apply for 5,000. They might apply for 1,000 or 1,500.
Or 100 bucks.
So that's why.
Because they put up a Plexiglas shield.
If they want to, if they want to take the time to apply for 100 bucks, I'm, I'm fine with that.
So that's why I was thinking doing it in a, just some things do partial. September 30th, then we keep it moving, like you said. We see how they come in.
Are you holding all of those till September 30th and doing it at one time?
One time?
Yeah.
They'll take an all-day meeting?
I don't care. It's going to take us eight two-hour meetings otherwise. So what's the difference? And that's like three times nine and nine times three, same thing.
Okay, tell us which places.
Yeah, I don't know. I just think about it, I mean, because I just think, I mean, there's a lot of these small businesses that have done what they needed to do to keep, to survive. And they would have done that regardless of whether they got funding or not. I mean, they were, they're doing what they need to do to keep their employees working and, and stay open.
Well, so another option is we can wait and do small business in a future phase. Do you want to just do hospitals, cities, and nonprofits at the moment? And talk more about how you want to handle small business and maybe do that next? I mean, we could move forward with the others and leave small business off like she has here. You know, other application types such as small business will be considered in future phases. I mean, that's an option as well if you guys want to talk more about how you want to handle small business.
If it's small, if that's the only thing, hold on. We got, we got to be moving ahead.
We do.
We can't, we can't wait until October to give out money. It's, it's.
But these are for reimbursements through December 31st. So how are you going to reimburse for it in September if it's something they don't?
Well, they're not going to apply.
Realize the expense until October. Who says they're not going to apply? If all of a sudden in November, you got to get more Plexiglas, then why, why wouldn't you apply? I mean, you look how much we've spent on our offices and stuff for that stuff. Maybe not everybody's done that yet. But they're like, well, I'm going to do that, I want to make my employees feel safe.
I mean, I, I think it'd be important to try to get a first-round application and see what we get in. I mean, maybe we don't get any applications and then we got to, I mean, but if we don't.
And then you change it.
Yeah.
You change your requirements.
But I, I guess my fear is it's a lot of work at the moment, even doing them weekly and trying to get through them. If you hold that and do them all at once.
But that's what we're paying B K D to, to do.
I'm not saying that they hold them. I mean, but, I mean, they can't keep going through them and we just hold all those and then we look at them all at once.
So then I'm back to my other question. If everybody scores high, are you picking the winners and losers there? Or are you saying, hey, if you score, I mean, maybe it's if you score a 22 out of 22, you move forward. If you don't, your application gets held until the 31st and then we decide what we have left. I don't know.
I'd say most people got some of this other funding and so I think it limits how many, how many people will apply. So, I mean, we may think that there might be 100 or 200 applicants, but people say, well, I already got this other stuff, I can't apply.
Right. I'm just, I'm just worried about doing them in bulk like that because there's subrecipient agreements, there's all of those things, the documentation, us cutting the checks. It makes, it condenses that work down into now you are further down the road and now I have to process 100 at a time instead of just 10 or 15 or whatever. So it, it just compresses that workload into a shorter timeframe and a lot more work on us, whereas we can keep that process going and keep moving a few on at a time. Then we're, we're taking off small bites of the elephant instead of trying to eat it in one sitting.
And I know you guys don't appreciate that, but she's at budget time, I'm at open enrollment time, and this has all been.
This is all we do.
On top of our regular job.
I think when this application comes out, you're going to have, we're, we're going to have a bunch as it is. Because I think most people are, they're not going to wait till the, you know, September 28th to fill out an application.
And I'll tell you, we probably have 35 or 40 at the moment that are waiting for this.
Yeah, and so.
This discussion to move forward.
So I think, I think we're going to have, we're going to have plenty very quickly. So if this, you know, gets, comes out tomorrow. I would bet you by our, our next week, you're going to have.
A lot.
Bunches. And.
I mean, the first 200,000 isn't that much. We can let it go with those limits and then see what we get.
Yeah, and we, and if we have, we don't have a spike and if we, we have more money, we can allocate.
Right.
Another 150,000 for small business or, if, if, if the need is there, you can do it.
One thing you might consider is if you go ahead and make, you know, phase two, it's going to be through September 30th. If you go ahead and let people apply, you're, you don't have to commit to approving them every week. So for example, to your point, if there's an, you know, if there's an extreme need and you want to put that one forward, that's, you know, that one's fine, you want to approve it. If there's something that, you know, you're not convinced that there's a need and you want to see what other applications you get in, then, you know, you could have that one on hold. So again, the commissioners would have the opportunity to, you know, the discretion to decide what they wanted to approve versus what they wanted to hold and see what other applications came in behind that if you wanted to.
And that's true. And that, that way, I would invite all of you guys to the workers group and we make it an agenda item that you would be here for the workers group to hear all that discussion before it comes to you for approval.
It, it is to a certain extent. When I, I sit here, I don't necessarily see the application. I've asked to see a couple of them. But we can make it where it is blind and they have the applications and.
So are you guys okay with the way we were before with these limits per these categories and just see what comes in? Or do you want the hard deadline of the 30th to look at small businesses separate from the rest of them?
I think we can sit on some if, if we have questions and we, if some really, really need it now, I would approve them now because I think we, I think if you put 5,000, you know, for small business for the first round and if, you know, if we have, you know, let's, let's be optimistic and, and, you know, we're going to get that vaccine November 1st and everybody's better. Well, we got to, we got to start giving some of the money out. It's, that's what it's for.
Okay, so do we want to put a deadline and hold the application until the deadline?
I vote yes on that one if we do September 30th, and I know you don't like that.
Is that only for small business and nonprofits? Or you want it to be for the cities and the hospitals as well?
So I've been talking about the small business all along. I thought we kind of agreed to, to move on with the cities.
Nonprofits and hospitals, medical centers, and nursing homes.
Yeah, what, the one thing we could do is say all, you know, that it's all open through September 30th, but small business applications, the decisions will be made after September 30th. Or will be made, you know, on September 30th or whatever date. That way, you're not, you know, I'm just trying to be sure we have clear guidance to the community when we put this out.
Or can we say by, by September 30th so we can at least go?
Julie, say that again. Say it again, Julie.
So we would say that phase two is going to be from now until September 30th and applications that will be processed.
On small business.
I, I really think you could just say applications will be processed and approvals provided by September 30th. That gives you completely way, that gives you completely way with everything. So that you can determine, you know, we'll still turn those around weekly to you and then you can decide, yes, we put it forward, no, we deny it, or we're going to put that on hold and we'll make a decision by the end of the line.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's, I like.
Again, you can, you know, it's fluid. You can just continue, you know, to, to make those decisions as we need to.
And then do you guys want to put a limit on it?
I'd say.
I say 5,000 on small business. And 25,000 on.
Nonprofits.
Nonprofits because I, I don't think 10,000 is going to.
That's the maximum.
Max in phase two.
Yeah.
2 million for total. Small businesses, 200,000.
Right, I was just talking, maximum for small business would be five and max for nonprofits would be 25.
In this round, yes.
Yeah, and again, if we, if there's, there's going to be more need, I'm sure for, for both or at least for non, nonprofits. And again, in the next phase, if, if we're, we don't have a big spike and there's not, you know, then you can earmark more money for nonprofits. You can earmark more money.
And then we would limit cities based on that population calculation. What about hospitals, medical centers, and nursing homes? Do you want a limit on it at the moment or just see what comes in?
Because the limit total is the 500,000. I think that's a shorter pool of people to consider, so I would not put a limit on that at this point, but that's up to you guys.
And we kind of said we're going to approach testing maybe out of the internal depending on what those applications look like.
It's up to those two.
If you don't have a limit on it, then somebody can come in and take that 500,000 on one application.
And, I mean, we could also hold those till September 30th, I guess.
But even if they apply for the full half million, we can say, we'll give you partial funding and then we'll take the other four or five, whatever arbitrary number you want to throw in right now and partially fund. We don't have to give them the whole funding, right? We're saying you can ask for whatever you want.
Right, so you could limit it to partial funding.
I'm fine with that, rather than ask for what they want and then we see kind of how they come in.
For the hospitals, medical centers, and nursing homes or for everyone?
I'm, I don't know. If you're going to have a limit on.
Man, I think for consistency's sake, if you have all of phase two, you know, would be, I think decisions will be made by September 30th. And then that way, again, everybody be, it's consistent, it'd be to understand for the public. And I think to your point that people can ask, you know, is it, we've got the limit on small business, we've got the limit on nonprofits, you know, if it's hospitals, if it's medical, you know, they can ask for the need. But again, you have that discretion for partially fund, you know, fund immediately, wait until, you know, again, you have that discretion. And then it lets you see what kind of applications they're going to get.
I mean, here's what we're talking about. If you have a nursing home that has an outbreak and has way more need to us, if that came to the working group, that would be something we would say, this is really urgent and needs to move forward. Because it's an immediate need right now. Whereas there are other applications for things that may not be an immediate need. They were a need, but not an immediate need because it's not happening right this minute that you may hold off and say later, you know, this is something that we think is, should be fully funded or partially funded depending on what other types of applications we get.
And that's in with your kind of that mission critical thinking that we did for the school. So again, that would be consistent.
And there is a section on the application, Julie, where they say, like, they prioritize the need. Is that still on there? As far as critical, urgent, you know, is that on that one? I know it was on the internal one.
Yeah, I don't think so because I think we were finding, you know, a lot of those.
Mark categorizing.
Yeah, I mean, they, they would mark it either. But I think you, I mean, I think in the vetting process and through the working group, we just, I mean, it's pretty easy to see what's cr, you know, what is critical versus, you know, a nice, nice to have or a future, you know, potential need. So I think it's easy to assess that.
And it's easier in the respect that we're just reimbursing, so.
So 5,000, 25,000, cities are based on census. And then we're going to hospitals. And it's all, no limit, September 30th is what y'all are.
Right. So if we have, yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with running with that. We could sit here and argue all day and have a dozen boys do this, so.
Okay, Julie.
Kind of somewhere in the middle. Do you like it?
Yes.
You like it, Chris? Are okay with it, can live with it? Hey, if none of us are happy, that's the best compromise that we got.
Hey, Julie, I think we've reached a consensus then. So hospitals, keep the 0.5 million, no limits, they can apply. Cities, based on the population, nonprofit, 25,000 limit. And small business, 5,000. And phase two will end by September 30th. And then we'll, we'll still keep going as we go, but we'll keep that in mind, you know.
All right, yeah, so what I'll do, I'm going to update the special link language. I'll send that to you just to make sure that's all in agreement with what we just talked about. And we'll make, you know, probably a couple of tweaks to the application to be sure that's consistent.
Julie, do you still think that applic- Julie, do you still think that application's gonna be ready tomorrow or do we need to go back to the 8th?
Yeah, I, I think I'm gonna, I think ideally, just to be sure we do it right, 'cause I don't wanna try to rush through it. I think we can get it out tomorrow, but I, I'll have to check with the developer. I think to have it on the 8th would be ideal.
That'll work. That'd give us time to get our IT people on board with getting that all updated when we get it, so...
Yeah, I, I just feeling, you know, the last thing we wanna do is, you know, not put our votes forward, so...
Well, and we don't want to push through and do something and have it wrong and have to fix it either.
Yeah, yeah. So if you're in agreement, I would recommend let's stay with the 8th. And then we'll be, you know, we could still put the press release out, you know, tomorrow, saying that, you know, it's gonna be live on
On the 8th.
And then that way, they'll be able to go out there.
So just a quick question here. So as I read this guidelines, it doesn't say that you can't apply if you receive these other fundings. It just says you'll have a lower score. Did we change that?
Well, so the other funding is for small business only. Like, I don't think it eliminates other applications that scores them lower. But on the small business at the moment, it was if you are receiving other funding, you're not going to be pushed forward. So that only applied to the small business at the moment. And Julie, is that in the application?
Uh, it is in the guidelines and so these are all items we are putting forth to the commissioners. And so now that we have that clarification, we'll add all of that language as we need to for the application.
So if they, everybody else, if they did receive other funding, will they have to list all the other funding that they got?
They do.
And then that information will be available to us.
Yeah, yeah, that's all part, yeah, that's all part of the application process.
It shows you what, how much you received. Shows us how much they received.
That's one of the questions on the application.
Guys have any more questions, Julie, or we're ready to move forward, I guess?
I like we're ready to move forward on it. Julie, have y'all picked up any other counties in Missouri to do theirs?
Uh, we have one other, I don't know that it's official.
Do we get referral fees if we referred you?
He's wondering if he gets a referral fee.
Oh. I'm gonna come to Polk County, I'll buy you lunch.
No, I can't do that.
We can't, we can't.
I meant for the county.
You can take me and Kristen if you're making it.
Okay, okay.
No, I was, I was teasing. We did talk to some people about it.
No, not me. You can take Debbie to lunch.
There you go, take Debbie to lunch.
All right, well, we appreciate y'all. I know this is hard work and it's just knowing the answers. I can, I can tell you, we're working in other states as well as Missouri and cities and counties. And, I mean, everyone is going through this and so it's just, these are really tough decisions and it's hard. So I, I definitely advise her, you know, that you're taking it, taking it to heart and doing the best you can, so...
All right, Julie, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank y'all, all right, bye.
Okay, we're gonna move forward.
Make sure you do accounts payable before we leave the meeting.
You got more stuff on your agenda?
Oh, I didn't even print off an agenda.
For Phase Two, all applications are due
We got more accounts payable from Tuesday?
Yeah, we have one bill that needs to be paid.
It's the Tahoe, he wants the check to take to go pick it up.
No.
No wonder you sat here through all that. He wants money.
Well, you thought you liked us.
Application request approved.
Application request approved. That's kinda what we did.
All right. I'm hoping that we approve accounts payable.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
And so can you guys make a motion to accept the application? Well, what was on there? Oh, never mind, never mind, we don't really have those.
Yeah.
We don't have any of those.
Right.
And we don't have any sub- recipient
Sub-recipient agreements.
No, we don't have either one of those.
Yeah.
Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
So that's a standing thing that's...
So those two shouldn't be on there.
Well, they're gonna be a standing on Tuesdays and Thursdays if things come through. And so we're leaving it on the agenda so we can, if there are approvals that are ready, they can go either Tuesday or Thursday.
Okay, sorry. I think you have one other thing on your agenda. Was there?
No, and they did this old thing.
Oh, they did this old thing, okay.
Yeah, we already did that.
So is that true for all Phase Two, all applications by any entity is due by September 30th?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, and we only put a cap on nonprofit and small business to be paid out?
Um, the cities is capped based on population or...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Distributed capped, whatever you wanna call it.
I just might listen.
I guess it is capped because they have, it's reimbursement, so...
Right. If I have it wrong, you'll find that.
Are we done then?
That's all I had on the agenda.
So we didn't have anything to approve today?
No.
No.
It didn't go through the working group, so we're not there.
So the plan right now is everything goes to the working group on Monday. We move forward, everything that's ready on Tuesday. If there are ones that are presented to the working group on Monday that it's something, we're just waiting for an answer, we'll try to move that through on Thursday. So you could have Thursdays where we really don't have anything. It's just kinda standing in case we can move that forward quicker. But we won't present anything new that didn't go to the working group on Monday. So anything that comes in after that fact of, for them to review for the Monday meeting gets pushed to the following week.
So Thursdays, we don't actually approve anything. We just answer questions, clarifications.
Thursday could be an approval if there's ones that have questions from the working group that get answered during the week so they can move forward quicker.
Nothing. David, you need the lights on at Tahoe too, or?
That one's in there, but I don't think it's for today.
I don't need the lights, well, when I get them, but that's fine. That's fine, Tuesday will be fine.
I think he just needs the check to pick up.
Just don't get a ticket driving back.
Does that make sense, Jeff? So anything that comes in by Thursday, the week before, gets presented to the working group on Monday.
Right.
Monday, we will push through everything we can that doesn't have additional questions.
But then what are y'all actually doing with the working group on answering questions that...
Right, and we're talking through, like, you know, we have a school that wanted Chromebooks. And the questions whether or not those Chromebooks are needed at the moment or not. Because they don't have that many kids that are distant.
Why would y'all do that? Why wouldn't B K D. do that?
Well, they are too, but it's just discussions about how we wanna handle things. 'Cause it, again, it's one of those gray areas of, we're not sure.
They qualify.
But if it qualifies, then it should just come to us. I mean, it should be to y'all.
But that's the question, the gray area is whether it qualifies.
Well, it qualifies to the point that it's a legitimate expense, but is, they have 50, they want 50 more. They got three kids sitting at home using them.
At the moment.
So to me, that's not necessary right now.
No, it could be, it could be in October.
It could be if school shut down tomorrow.
It could be, yeah.
Right.
So then it's, do we buy them now in case they need them or do we wait? Do we, it, it's just that kind of questions that are coming to the group and we're all kind of discussing.
And part of the problem is if, if we wait and they order them in October, November, they're not gonna get them until February, probably.
And the same things, like the things you discussed today about unemployment or loss of revenue, those are things that are coming to the working group that we're coming to you to ask. So we're trying to head off those questions, figure out how it fits into what we have and then whether or not that moves...
But y'all are the ones that should be making that decision though.
We're not making it.
We're not, we're just choosing not to push those forward until we get an answer from you.
From you guys. 'Cause that's more of a, a guidance of the, these items.
So like, we had someone apply for unemployment, but we hadn't discussed this yet. So we're not moving that application forward.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back to the Chromebooks thing.
Right.
They say they need them for, they qualify, right?
Right now, B K D.'s holding that one. Because they want clarification of whether it's in compliance or not.
Okay, so then that's not a good example, 'cause they're not coming to you to see if it...
No, but the, the working group's discussing it too. They're telling us why it's not moving forward or whatever, so we know where it is in the process. We're trying to make sure we're getting sub-recipient agreements for you, our award letters ready. It's kind of that in-between of, hey, here's the documents we need to have to give it to you to move it forward. That's what it is.
And the schools, the schools that are actually, we buy for them, we are constantly corresponding with the purchasing agent here to help us make that happen.
But if you have, say, thermal, thermal imaging cameras?
Yes.
That qualifies.
It's moving forward to you.
What if you don't like them, you don't think they work good or they're...
Well, that's not us. That's not happening in the working group.
But that's why they wanna use their money for it, then that's, that's the same with...
That's not our decision.
That's not our decision.
So then I don't understand where the recommend or don't recommend comes from. 'Cause y'all either recommend or you don't recommend.
The recommend on their thing is really B K D.'s recommendation. It's only if there's something else, like, hey, we're not sure if your quote from Amazon is the right place to buy these. We have a question before we move on. That, that's what's going through the working group.
So recommend says qualifies.
Yes. That's why earlier when...
I think that's where I was getting confused.
No, when Chris said qualify or don't qualify, the recommendation is qualify. It's not going to you. It's coming through as denied if it doesn't qualify. And we want you to deny those.
Okay, that's where I think I was confused.
No, the recommend...
Qualify, not qualify, recommend, not recommend.
No. Recommend is qualify or don't qualify. It doesn't, it's not a recommendation.
And we have, and we have something to the, them right now on an application. You guys approved three or four things off of a person's application. There was two or three things additional that weren't qualified, that didn't. And right now, we were denying whole applications, but now we're going to decide whether we should quantify that.
Well, in that circumstance, the school submitted these four things of those three qualified, one didn't. Then they had another list of items, these are the things I want if these things don't qualify. So now their application has to go back through the process again. The, the working group is more of a paperwork.
Yeah.
Head off those questions to make the process smoother. Once you guys say yes, go forward, is really what the working group is. And then it's these questions that come up that something we didn't think about that we wanna come to you and get clarification before we move it forward.
Right, and that email address, you know, we're sharing that email address between B K D. and us just so things get corresponded back to. Schools will apply one day and then they email me the next day on that ad, email address. "Have you had an answer yet?" And I'm like, "Really? Okay." So we need to keep corresponding with them, you know, so it's not just a one, one-and-done deal here.
Right. Ours is more of an administrative group than anything else. Is we're making sure that everything's in place once you say yes, that it moves forward smoothly.
And that's why we wanna continue with the internal applications, you guys knowing about them before...
And, yeah, that's one of the ones that's on the list too. We wanna make sure that those internal applications, if they haven't been to you first, are going to you so you guys say, "Yes, this is a priority." 'Cause the working group doesn't have a, a dog in that fight. It's not part of our, like, we're not making that decision. We want you to tell us in front and then it moves forward quickly. But that was a question that we had from last week's working group.
So we're all learning as we go here.
Right. Every week's a different, different discussion.
We got anything else?
Nope.
I move we recess till 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.